I want to call this meeting with the Westland Planning Commission to order. Please rise to our pledge of allegiance and also you have to face that way.
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. You have to face that way for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you. We're going to start first by putting item number one. We're going to move an agenda item. I'm sorry. Thank you. Let me explain. Today's my first day acting as chair, so forgive me if I make any mistakes and I'll do my best.
Ms. Chair, first we need to establish a quorum, so roll call is appropriate first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call. Duranty?
Here.
Folks?
Here.
Rappaport?
Present.
Richards?
Present.
Ken Sharp is absent, excused. Statchow?
Present.
And Thompson.
Present.
Chair, Vice Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We need a motion to move from last month's agenda to this month's agenda. I believe Mr. Rappaport has a motion for us.
I do. I'd move to take item number, my apologies, item number 2256 from the table and place it onto the orders of today's day in the spot so indicated by the minutes.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Richards?
Yes.
We need a roll call on that?
And also the case number 11781A.
Moving from last month's...
No, that's a new item on the agenda. There's no need to take that off the table.
Yeah. Number three?
Number two.
Yeah. 1178A, from last month's agenda to this month's agenda?
Month's agenda, yes.
As noted?
That's the wrong one.
That's the wrong one. That is not a friendly amendment.
Yeah, he already did the 2256.
Yeah, he did the 2256.
Yeah.
That's the only one that needs to come off the table.
Right, so everything else, yes, that's it. We're good.
The one at 2256.
Not even the 1178, no?
Nope.
Okay. This is new. Number 178 is new. Okay, I stand corrected. No problem. Roll call.
Okay, this is a roll call vote to take case number 2256 off the table. Duranty?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
And Thompson. And our petitioner for that is here in the audience tonight. Thank you.
Next we have number one, consideration of the request of the city of Westland.
Ms. Chair, I apologize for interrupting again. Orders of the day. You need approval of minutes first.
Oh, you're right. Approval of minutes. So moved.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Richards, support by Mr. Duranty. Roll call.
All right, roll call vote to approve the April 5th, 2023 meeting minutes. Duranty?
Abstain.
Okay. Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. If there are any citizens here that would like to comment on something that's outside of the agenda, please let us know by coming to the front and we'll add it to the agenda. I see no other citizens here. We'll move on to the next. Item number one, consideration of the request of the city of Westland to review and recommend approval of the proposed capital improvements plan commencing fiscal year 2023 through 2024. Daniel Block, Budget Director. Ms. Chair, I...
Thank you, Vice Chair. As you mentioned, this is the capital improvements plan commencing for fiscal year 2023, 2024. The Planning Commission was provided, the CIP, Capital Improvements Plan, about a few weeks ago via mail. This has also been being discussed via council study sessions for the past maybe three weeks. They've been meeting on Saturday. There's a lot of legwork that goes on behind the scenes as well through internal conversations with the administration and staff. The budget department, I'm sorry, the finance department and the budget director are heavily involved in preparing the CIP and working with various departments to prepare the CIP for the city. Daniel Block, our budget man, is here. He can walk through any items you have questions on, or if you want a further summary, he can provide that for you. I will highlight that the master plan update is in here. We're requesting, the planning department is requesting $80,000 for the master plan update. The state of Michigan requires through the Michigan Planning Enabling Act that the cities, all cities, townships, and villages have a master plan and the master plan be updated every five years. So we are at that five-year mark and that is why we are requesting that funding in the CIP program. I will stop speaking and if Dan has any further comments, I'd be happy to pass it off to him. Thank you.
Through the chair, I'll summarize it pretty well. I think you have any other questions?
Do we have any questions from the commission? See no questions from the commission. Are there any ones in the audience since this is a public hearing? No one? Okay. Mr. Ayew?
Yeah, that's really all I had. The Planning Commission holds a public hearing for the CIP program, which is an element of the overall budget, and then moves it over to city council for further discussion and for final approval. So this is before you, as I mentioned again, as part of the public hearing process.
That's an excellent item. Mr. Duranty?
I want to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and send the capital improvement plan onto city council for approval.
Motion by Ms. Duranty?
Support.
Support by Ms. Richards?
I'd modify that just simply by clarifying that we are actually setting it along with our recommendation.
Recommendation to approve instead of city council?
What you intended, sir, yes. Thank you very much. Then if that's the case, then I, but are we on a roll call vote or maybe?
Roll call.
Then, then, yes.
This is so funny when you look back on it, I know. Roll call, please.
Okay, this is a roll call vote to recommend approval to the city council of the proposed capital improvements plan commencing 2023, 2024 fiscal year. Duranty?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Motion approved. Next we have case number 22, I'm sorry, let's skip that one. Case number 1178A, proposed...
Orders of the day?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Acting Chair, why are we skipping item number two?
It's been put back on the agenda.
Okay, we did put it back on.
Yeah.
In the place where it was announced to be.
Yes.
So orders of the day, we should be doing number two.
Should say, right, okay, gotcha. Case number 2256, proposed special land use approval for a childcare center. 2146, south Wayne Road, west side of Wayne Road, south of Palmer. Ms. Chair, Mr. Ayew?
Okay, thanks, Vice Chair. Let me pull up the image on the screen here. Okay. The property here comprises of about 13,000 square feet and is currently zoned CB1. That's our low-intensity commercial business district. It's outlined in yellow on your screen. The property currently contains an old, single-family dwelling, which was previously used as a music store. The music store closed down late last year, maybe in the fall. The petitioner proposes to locate a child daycare center on the first floor of the building, serving, sorry, children from six weeks of age to eight years of age. This is somewhat, or is an extension rather, of the existing and operational child daycare center directly adjacent to the north. The proposed center, while I just mentioned this, will expand the existing operations of the one to the north. That addresses 2134 South Wayne Road. So some adjacent land uses and zoning in the area, property to the north. This is what I just referred to, is zone CB1, low intensity, and is also developed by a daycare facility owned by the petitioner. Properties to the south are zoned R5, single-family residential and developed with single-family dwellings. These are the deep parcels here. Let me change my pointer here. This one and this one here. There's also another adjacent parcel to the south, and that is developed by a checkers drive-through restaurant. There's some parcels to the east, which are zoned CB1 and are vacant. And there's some parcels to the west, which are zoned R5, single-family residential and developed by single-family dwellings. The future land use designation in the master plan indicates neighborhood commercial and office services. And then I'll just brief through summary of some of the site-specific information. The site is accessed with one, I believe, yeah, one full-service driveway at Wayne Road. The site will share parking and pedestrian access with the existing childcare center to the north, I'm sorry, to the south, yeah, no, to the north, I'm sorry, which the petitioner, as I mentioned, owns. There is sufficient access and parking on the adjacent parcel to accommodate both the existing and proposed childcare facilities. There's also an existing playground area that is located on that northern parcel that will be used as part of the operations being proposed here. The site does contain some existing landscaping and screening, screening specifically to screen the residents on the west side. As you know, we received a letter from the residents adjoining here on the south side, which you can consider during discussion. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday as proposed by the petitioner from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And finally, daycare uses are generally not as intensive as other land uses that come before us as special land uses, so the planning department does consider this use consistent with the existing uses and zoning of the general area. And therefore, the administration and planning department are recommending approval. The petitioner is here today and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I'm able to, for audience at home and in the room here today. We did receive, and the Planning Commission received, a packet containing a site plan and some other site-specific things. Here's what the building looks like today. There will be some aesthetic improvements done to the building and the exterior before this is open. We received a floor plan showing specifically on the first floor how the layout of the daycare space will be laid out. And this is a street view to the south. This is the adjacent existing daycare. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Our petitioners are here. Okay. Please come forward, please. Do you have anything else to add to Mr. Ayew's comments, summary?
I think you covered it pretty well, but I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. We'll open this up to anyone in the audience. This is an open hearing, so if anyone here would like to question, ma'am, you can have a seat if you'd like. Yes, sir?
Should I come up?
Please.
Can you also state your name, please, and your address, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mark Peterson. I own the property south of the property in question, 354 N.H. La Avenue. I did submit a written request prior to this meeting. I don't have any real concerns about the use of the land. I would just like to request a privacy fence be installed between the property in question and my residential property, both for the safety of my family and my children and the children at the facility. So it does look like a fence was installed around most of the perimeter, as I look back, you know, at the back of my property. I own the two long, directly south properties right there, yep.
So your request is to have a fence installed? That was your request?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Duranty?
Is there a fence along that property line now?
There's an old, small wire fence that's falling down. They may have put a chain-link fence. There is some chain-link fences. I don't think the chain-link fence borders my property, though. It's just probably 100-year-old.
But is it? Isn't most of that property wooded?
It is. However, it's still my resident ultra-property. I use the area. I'm actually cleaning out the wooded area to clean up the property, make it safer for my family and, you know, visitors. So I do use the whole property and I run a lot of power tools. I mean, I don't want, you know, any children crossing over and potentially endangering, you know, anyone in that way, so.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Peterson, we did receive your letter and I'm looking at it now. So your letter actually requested for a privacy fence. And now here in chambers, you're asking for it for safety reasons. But I'm a little unclear what the safety concerns actually are specifically for the children. Like, what is specifically your concern that the children's safety is at issue?
Well, if any children were to cross onto my property, you know, if I'm running power tools, not paying attention, somebody could potentially get hurt. I mean, if I'm not aware that somebody's crossing over, I know there's going to be a lot of people coming in and out of that property as it's going to be a childcare, both children and parents.
So the concern is that you would like the petitioner to be required to construct a fence because you have dangerous circumstances, dangerous conditions on your property?
I mean, I also want to prevent my family, my children, from crossing over into the other, you know, seeing kids playing over there, running and, you know, crossing property lines.
Okay, so what you want is a barrier fence, not a privacy fence?
A barrier fence would probably be okay.
Okay, but I'm still a little unclear why that would be the petitioner's responsibility for us to require before we actually allow them their use. I mean, certainly, it's reasonable for you to make the request, but it might be unreasonable for us to require it.
Okay. From my understanding, I may be incorrect here, but I did just see a commercial property right next to me get renovated, and he told me that he was required to put a fence between commercial and residential property anyway.
Right. Those are generally not compatible uses, and there's any number of reasons why that might have been required in that instance. I'm just trying to figure out why we would have to require it of this petitioner. And if that is just a thing that is better for you and the petitioner to handle, the two of you as good neighbors, or if it's something that we should ask the government agency to require, as the city to require. As I'm sure you're aware, the role of government isn't to tell people how to use their private property. As much as we can avoid, those requirements that we use have to be reasonable and narrowly drafted, otherwise it's an unconstitutional taking. So we have to make sure that we're not only being fair and reasonable to you, but also fair and reasonable to them.
Understood, yep.
So, and that's why I asked you to clarify the dangers that you're concerned about, so that in the event that we can't or we don't think that it's appropriate for us to require that, that the petitioner also hears it and makes a decision for herself, potentially.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I got the letter in the mail about this hearing, and I saw it as an opportunity to bring up this potential issue that I see, and that's why I'm here.
That's exactly what we're here for. Thank you very much. I hope my questions were informative to you.
Mm-hmm. Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to that issue? Go ahead, petitioner.
Yeah, nobody. She's got to the microphone, please.
Okay, address the comment.
So we can hear it.
Complete.
You gotta go to the microphone.
Please. Is she the petitioner?
Yes. She is.
I just wanted to say that we, when we did acquire the property and we were making some changes, we did change the entire metal fences also, so they're not the old ones. We did have them all changed.
So that's already done?
Yeah, they're metal fences, so we had them changed and fixed and all that. And we did have newer, on the other side, we had newer wooden fences that are higher. So this one, because there are lots of trees there on that side, we had, already had a metal fence there, we just replaced it. Same metal fence, it's just new.
Okay. All right, Madam Chair. Yeah, through, to the petitioner. So then, the students that you are going to have in your daycare area, where are they going to be playing and what length of time and that nature? How long are they going to be outside? Are they going to be supervised? You know, and also, if you can answer those questions for us, that would help clarify maybe some of the concerns that the gentleman has.
So on that building specifically, we are, I do plan to have my GSRP classroom. That's a four-year-old classroom. It's just going to be one classroom. They're going to have 16 children at the most and with two teachers. And whenever they come out and play, it will be, it will be supervised. They will be with those two teachers. And there is, we have the existing playground, and that has all the slides and, you know, those things, climbers that they can use. This side, this additional property, this just has a flower garden, a vegetable garden, and it's got a shade. So they don't use it that much, but just when they're going out to garden, they use it then. All the cycling and everything is done on the other side.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Richards?
Well, I have a couple of questions. Will this facility cater to children with special needs or disabilities?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so you have train staff that knows how to handle that?
We've made arrangements.
For your time, I know it's from 8:00 to 4:00, but you get latchkey hours from 6, I mean, from 4:00 to 6:00. But from 6:00 to 8:00, what kind of activities will you have for them to do until the classes start?
They will be, so we, they will be in the older building before the teachers come. So for, before cares, they usually have breakfast, and then they have morning time where they can do, we provide them, you know, morning worksheets because they're older group, four-year-olds.
So it'll be something to cover for two hours?
Yes.
Okay. My next question is about the restrooms. I know you have two, but you only have one toilet in each. And you say you got, what, 15 kids?
They're...
Are you gonna, is it required, I'm sorry, through the chair, director, is it required that, you know, when you have so many children like that, boys and girls, that they should have a bathroom with more than one toilet?
Sure. That's a good question. The planning department...
I, okay. The planning department does not review bathrooms. That's the building department. The building department was heavily involved in this. They even went out to the site and inspected the facility before this was even kind of hypothetically approved to go to the Planning Commission. And that they had no concerns about the restrooms. There were some concerns, but none about the bathrooms.
Because we're little kids, you know what I'm saying? When one got to go, all of them have to go.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I can't see how that can be handled.
Yeah, there are requirements, for sure. And this will go through permitting, again, through the building department if it is approved. And potentially, there will be another review that finds something different. But like I said, the building department did go out there. And they are the authority over the bathroom situation.
That's all.
And sometimes the state gets involved, too, and has some other dialogue with them. The city does not have a role in that aspect of it, so if you want to speak on where you're at with the state review process, you're welcome to.
Like you said, we did have the, we've had a lot of people come in from the city and inspect this, and we did have to modify the bathroom to meet the handicap accessible requirement.
Yeah, so that...
So we did do that. At that point, they did not point this out to us, that we would need another stall there. We do have, the upstairs has another bathroom that's being built there.
That's just one toilet, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there is an extra bathroom that they would, they could use.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commission?
Make a motion if that's more...
No other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Rappaport.
Thank you very much, Ms. Acting Chair. With regard to case number 2256, proposed special land use approval for childcare center, this being a public hearing, I would move to close the public hearing with the normal rules and send, once again, case number 2256 to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Support.
And, sorry, contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support. Second. Case number 2256. We need a roll call on that?
Yep.
Okay, roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 2256. Duranty?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, please do keep the gentleman's gestures in mind.
Next on our agenda, case number 1178A, proposed special land use approval for preschool and childcare center, 33200 Warren Daycare, north side of Warren Road, west of Annoy. Is the petitioner here for this one? What is your name, ma'am? I don't have that.
Harrisburg.
Harrisburg, okay, thank you. Mr. Ayew?
Okay, thank you. The property here comprises of about 35,000 square feet. It's zoned office business. That's our OB district. The property contains an old, single-family dwelling, which was previously known to be used as a medical office. That was the last known use or recorded use. I don't know if there was anything currently being used as a medical office. Thank you. The petitioner proposes to locate a childcare center in the building, serving children from one year to 10 years of age. Childcare centers are also special land uses in the OB zoning district. Some adjacent land uses, for the record, real quick. Properties to the north are all zoned R5, single-family residential and developed by single-family dwellings. Kind of see them on the screen there. Property to the south is zoned GAR, garden apartment, and developed by the Warren Woods apartment complex. Properties to the east, well, property to the east is zoned OB, office business, and is developed by a single-family dwelling, occupied as a single-family dwelling. And then property to the west, it's a small office park, zoned office business. The future land use designation of this site in the master plan is neighborhood commercial slash office services. Some site characteristics, kind of see the curb cut there, the driveway from Warren. The site is accessed by a full-service driveway at Warren Road. The site will contain 20... The site will contain twenty parking spaces. This is more than sufficient for the proposed use. So sufficient access and parking provided on-site is sufficient to accommodate the proposed childcare center. There is a proposed twenty-eight square foot, it was, um, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Because it was, it was a little difficult to make out on the site plan, but I believe it's a twenty-eight hundred square foot play area. It's on the north side of the building, in the backyard. The site contains existing screening in the rear to screen the adjacent residential properties. The existing building is constructed, well, you saw it, with existing brick material, the previous, I already mentioned the previous known use. The existing sign needs to be removed and replaced or repaired, so that could be a condition if you are not proposing to make that change. The hours of operation as presented by the petitioner are Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And that's all I have on this. The administration and planning department are recommending approval. I'm happy to answer any questions. And Ms. Harrisburg is also, as you know, in the audience. Thanks.
Ms. Harrisburg, do you have any other comments to make to a summary? Any questions from the audience? Open it up to our commission. She has a question. Oh, I'm sorry. I looked away too fast. Apologize.
No, that's fine. I was debating in my head. My name is Paul Anaki. I live at 33305 Chief Lane, which is behind this. I hope you approve it. I think it's a, a great idea. I wish that when my, my kids were littler, that we had something that close, so I hope, I do encourage you to approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Okay, we'll open it up to commission. Ms. Richards?
Under analysis 2C, does this time include latchkey hours?
Yes. The main portion of our school day is 8:30 to 3:30. And then before and after that would be considered latchkey or before and after care.
Well, my same question to you, like I asked her, for the kids who do come early, what type of activities will they have for them to do? And what time? You said preschool starts at 8:30, right?
Yes.
Okay. So what will you have for them to do when they get there at six? The same?
Sure. So when they come in while they're waiting for their class to start, they would just do, like, you know, tabletop work, puzzles, different learning activities, you know, just kind of a chill start to their, to their day.
Okay. Will this facility cater to children with special needs and disabilities also as well?
Yes.
Okay, and you have the trained staff to do that?
Yes.
And of course, the last thing for me is the bathroom.
Sure.
I noticed that you got two now, because you're building one on. Is it just one stall in there, or do you have more than just one toilet?
Uh, so there's actually three restrooms. The main restroom is large enough to actually accommodate two toilets in there, and that is something we had proposed to do with a partition for privacy.
Okay.
And then also, during a licensing portion, the state does make sure that your toilet capacity aligns with the capacity of students that we're requesting. So they also follow up on that as well.
Okay. So that third one would also be for the kids? Because I thought that might have been a staff bathroom or something.
I guess it would depend on how many students we have and what their needs would be, but it would be there for either purpose.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, make a motion. Go ahead, Statchow. Oops, Statchow.
Yeah. Go ahead, do you have another question?
Mr. Durante, you have a question?
Yeah. Um, what's the longest the students, your, how long are they going to be there? What's the longest?
Typically, the, they, they can be there for up to ten hours per day.
Okay. What are you going to do for food?
Uh, we will be having onsite food.
Onsite food? You'd be cooking it there?
Yes.
There's a kitchen on the floor plan.
Yeah, there's a kitchen in the property.
Okay. And who's going to maintain the kitchen?
That would be the responsibility of our school, and that is also under the Health Department's direction.
Well, are you going to have a certified dietitian there? Or are you going to have, you know, to provide the meals and that? How, how are the meal planning's going to be?
Uh, we actually participate in a food program that's run through the state of Michigan, and so they require us to serve a certain meal, and then we're reimbursed for those meals. So we are under the oversight of the Michigan Department of Education to ensure that we're providing the appropriate meals.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
If I may?
You have a question? She's going to make the motion.
I understand that. I'd like to be recognized for the floor.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
May be recognized. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I noticed that the, from our, from our overhead here, that you're fronting on a major street. I'm a little concerned with traffic during pickup and drop-off. Can you describe what that's, what you, what, what your, what your logistical plan is about that? Because for certain, and I see the, the fire, the firefighter behind you, he's, he's nodding his, his echo and concern. Like, certainly, there's a, there's a school by where I live, and of course, that they have a lot more foot traffic, a lot more students than you're proposing. But during pickup and drop-off time, it can get quite congested because they, they, it's a, it's a legacy school. It's been there forever. And unfortunately, when the school was, was designed and implemented, they didn't have a reasonable plan for how to manage the traffic. I'd just like to hear from you what actually you envision as traffic management so that, because we certainly can't have, can't have traffic congestion on a major road.
Sure. So I guess the pickup and drop-off schedule would be based on our enrollment. So how many students would be coming in at a certain time? We can actually stagger our preschool start time to be, you know, different from the other classes if we would need to do so. We have thought about that, you know, in our planning. And also, as far as like safety, the parents, obviously, they come into the building to pick up their child, and then they leave with the child. So no child would be, you know, out of the building without supervision.
I do have a question. Have a question? Oh, okay. Statchow?
So, no child left behind.
Right.
And what, practicing a little active listening, I, I think what I'm hearing is, is in the event that, that, that traffic does become an issue during pickup and drop, drop-off times, you guys would, your plan is to either A, cut enrollment in order to, to keep it, the congestion from happening, or to, to logistically with the parents, stagger pickup and drop-off times so that they're scheduled?
Right.
So that you don't actually have a, a traffic?
Right.
You're not creating a traffic issue.
Exactly. Yes.
Okay. So before I, before, Ruby's very, very patiently waiting for the next bathroom question. So before I, before I let it go, the floor, I would like to ask through the chair to the administration. I heard something mentioned about the signage and that being, that needing to be updated or, or, or is the administration indicating that they would like that included as a condition of, of our recommendation for approval?
Not necessarily. Well, I would hope that the, the sign needs to go. I think you would agree.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we, we would.
Okay, well, I am proposing to the motion maker then that we do make it a, the, dealing with the sign, I, I don't know how you'd like to, to actually word it, I'll just leave that up to you. But I would like that to be a, a condition for our recommendation for approval, the updating or, or managing the sign to a, to a degree that would be satisfactory to building and planning. With that, I see the floor.
Okay. Ms. Richards has a question.
That garage, will that existing garage be torn down?
Uh, which, which garage are you referring to?
The one that's falling down in the back.
Oh, yes. So that is not in our plan to remove that right now. We will be, you know, making adjustments as needed to whatever the building inspection would make us to do.
Because there's some downwired.
Yes. We have contacted the property owner about that, and they had the utility company come out. So they already are aware of that, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have a question.
Okay.
I was just wondering, how many children will you have in the facility roughly at a time? Do they say? Do you have? It is on the sheet, and that number was just based on the plain square footage, but obviously licensing would come and measure the space with our furniture and things in there, and then they would kind of dictate what the capacity could be.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Okay. You have a question for a motion?
A question, yes. To Vice Chair and through, to the administration, please. I noticed that they have one handicap area with a ramp that is a considerable distance away from the building. Is, is there a required amount of handicaps other than just one for this size of area?
Are you referring to the ADA parking spaces?
Uh, yes, in the parking space area. I noticed that it does have a handicap, and it does have a ramp.
Okay.
But it is a distance away from the building.
Okay. Well, yes, ADA parking spaces are required to be close to the building. There will probably be more than one that's required, maybe, maybe two or three. That will be flagged during the building inspection process. And, yeah, we'll make sure we get that right.
More than one, though?
I'm sorry?
More than one handicap area should be provided in, for this type of parking area, the quantity of parking spaces.
Yes, I assume more than one. I don't know the exact number, but I assume more than one will be required.
And closer to the building.
They are currently in the closest.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
They are currently, the handicap spot is the closest spot to the building, and that's where we would add additional.
Should be closer to the doorway?
Yeah, it's as close as the doorway as we can get for the parking lot.
From this drawing, it doesn't look like it is.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And then I'll relinquish the proposed motion to you, sir, since you have an item that, sure, since you have an update that you'd like to do with signage.
Thank you so much, my colleague.
No problem.
Please.
If the motion will be in order, I'll, I'll go ahead and make that modification.
Yes, go ahead and make the complete motion.
With regard to case number 1178A, proposed special land use approval for preschool and childcare center at 33200 Warren, north roadside of Warren Road, west of Annoy. I would like to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and send the proposal on to City Council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon the, the petitioner meeting the, the expectations of the administration with regard to updating and/or removal of existing outdated signage, and otherwise as the department shall require or recommend.
Support.
Support. The maker was Mr. Rappaport, support by Mr. Durante. Roll call.
Okay, roll call vote to approve, to recommend approval of case number 1178A. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. Did he get that correct, Ms. Statchow? Did he get it all? In his motion, did he have it all? Just want to make sure.
I missed it all.
Except for the possible handicap.
Okay.
Can I, can I have a moment, real quick?
Sure.
Vice Chair. So both of your cases will be moved to the City Council, to the, not the, let me see, which one? To the, we still have time, so May 15th, City Council's when the next City Council is for your agenda to show up. So that's where we will like you to be present at 7:00 p.m. in this, in this room. Okay? Thank you. Thanks, Vice Chair.
Okay. Moving on. Congratulations, lady. Consideration to direct the administration to prepare and distribute a request for proposals, or RFP, for a comprehensive update of the City of Westland, Michigan master plan. Mr. Au?
Okay. So this is sort of a requirement that the Planning Commission is technically in charge of the master plan process. So as I mentioned earlier, it's time to update this master plan that we have. So this resolution that I drafted, that's in front of you, basically directs the administration to start the master plan update process if you decide to approve it. If you don't, then I have less work to do, which is great, so.
Question, Mr. Durante?
I make a motion that...
I have a question first.
What question?
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Rappaport, go ahead. What's your question?
Uh, to the administration, the, you had mentioned that the, that the, that the zoning, oh my God, now I'm going to blank on the name of the act.
Oh, Planning Enabling Act?
The Planning Enabling Act. Thank you so much, Mr. Director. The Planning Enabling Act requires us to, to update the master plan on a regular basis. Now, the Zoning Enabling Act, I believe, unless, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, is relatively new. It's been codified within the last ten years, I would say. And prior to, to the requirements of the Zoning Enabling Act and the last time that we updated our master plan, are you aware of the, of the, how long our master plan had gone unupdated without updates?
Prior to the last update?
Prior to the last one. We, we did one approximately four, almost five years ago now.
Five years ago, yeah. Before that, I do not know, but my suspicion is that it was a very, very long time before that.
I believe that the number is in the twenty-five range, twenty-five year range.
Yes.
So I believe that, I believe that, although I intend certainly to, to vote approval on its, on the merits of actually having a, a regular update, as I'm sure your, your directorship is aware, I myself was, was very assertive that, that this body's operating document also have a regular update process for reasons that should obviously, that should be obvious.
Okay.
But I believe that, that we don't really have a whole lot of discretion here. It, it seems to me that in order for us to be in compliance with the, with the, with the Zoning Enabling Act, that this is a thing that, that must actually happen. So with that...
Go ahead and make the motion.
Well, that's, that's my new plan. I just keep talking until everybody else doesn't want to make motions anymore. Well, with the, if a motion's in order, I...
You're okay with making the motion?
I move that the, that for approval of the, of item number four and a vote by, a voice vote by acclamation.
Support.
Motion made by Mr. Rappaport, support by Mr. Durante. Roll call.
Does anyone have any objections to the motion made?
No.
No.
No?
Cool.
You're okay.
Vice President's just...
Okay.
Now, did I make, oh, never mind. We got one more thing on the menu.
Yes, we do. Hold on, please.
He ready to go?
Okay, last one, number five. Rescheduling the July 5th, 2023 meeting to July 12th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. Any discussion on that?
Sure.
No discussion?
Uh, no, this is just to avoid some conflicts with the City Council meeting, wink, wink, that's going to be, I'm also going to be on vacation that week. That's gonna be, I'm also gonna be on vacation, um, that week, so.
So I make a motion that we reschedule the July fifth, twenty-twenty-three meeting to July twelfth, twenty-twenty-three at six o'clock.
Motion made by Ms. Richards. Support by Mr. Rappaport.
Uh, request motion, uh, vote to be made by acclamation. And just as a, just as a, just in case somebody who, uh, who needs to hear it would need to hear it, perhaps if Nicole would be so kind as to make sure that nobody accidentally fails to show up because we were confused, that would be very, very nice and Mother Hennich of her.
She's on her job. She's on her job.
Yes, she's good about things like that. Motion carries by acclamation. This is it. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
No one's...
Second?
Nope. Thank you, Thompson.
You're welcome.
They didn't. I can't believe they didn't do it.
All right, guys.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.